Thank you. We begin with a moment of silence following. Kay Kiggins, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Cynthia Irvine, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Dot Pete's a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we begin with a proclamation today for our school and ADAPEP counselors and appreciate. Around our school building, school and ADAPEP counselors have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School and ADAPEP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. We honor the school and ADAPEP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments. I, Paul Farfalea, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February 5th, 2024, a School and ADAPEP Counselor Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. I'll make a motion to that. Look for a second. Second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion? All in favor? Post, and thank you. That is carried.
Mr. Krill, I just want to make sure that we represent the counselors that are here. And I actually am old enough where I remember. And we have Shannon Heffron here, Head Counselor at CNS High School.
Thank you.
Kristi Nappi, also counselor at CNS High School. Congratulations. And a little fun fact is when I left the high school twenty-something years ago, Mrs. Mrs. Heffron replaced me at the high school. So, and House One. Here.
Hey, we have another celebration today. We're going to recognize our students for their achievement in the district-wide spelling bee. North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education is pleased to acknowledge and commend the exceptional performance of the following students who demonstrated outstanding spelling bee prowess in the district-wide spelling bee. First place, Matthew Connor from Gillette Road Middle School in the fifth grade. Second place, Hayden Totti, Gillette Road Middle School, sixth grade. And third place, Isaac Butterfield, Gillette Road Middle School, fifth grade. Total of thirty-four students from Roxborough Middle School, Gillette Road Middle School, and North Syracuse Junior High School competed in the district-wide spelling bee at the district office on December 7th, 2023. Top three students will participate in the Scripps Regional Written Exam in early February. The board expresses appreciation to the students, their parents, teachers, and everyone involved, ignoring organizing and supporting this enriching activity. Congratulations, and best of luck to our talented spellers.
On behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District and the school board, I'd like to call up Connor to receive this certificate for first place in the district-wide spelling bee. I said Connor. Let me rephrase that. Matthew Connor. Congratulations. Awesome job.
Good job.
And I believe we have Isaac here, and Isaac came in third place. Congratulations. Congratulations. And I think what we'll do is also two young men come forward and we'll get a picture.
Okay, next, it is my pleasure to introduce Nick Dolberg again, who's going to do a presentation and update on social-emotional learning and social studies. I think lots of questions as you do this.
Good evening, everybody. I feel extremely lucky and grateful to be able to share with you some of the really wonderful things that are happening in our district. So here we are, student support, and app that the counselors are being honored February 5th. We owe them such a debt of gratitude for the work they've done, not only this year, but always, and especially through the pandemic. So I am incredibly grateful to work for this district, to have grown up in this district in terms of my professional life, and incredibly grateful to the board, our community, and our cabinet for the opportunity to do this work that I feel so passionately about. Just quickly, an acknowledgement of Anadaga. We're on right now. Very briefly, our goals tonight. I'm going to provide you with an update on where we are in terms of the student supports and our initiatives. Discuss quickly the sustainability of the work and potential next horizons for this work, and field any questions you may have. So I got to thinking about our whole approach to social-emotional learning, student support, wellness, mental health. And it's kind of like when you go out west to the four corners, that there is a place, it's an actual real place, where you can stand and at the same time be in four states. How cool is that? And so it got me thinking about the four corners of our district of for student support. The first is social-emotional learning, which is not a thing, but it is how we do all things, where everyone, every day matters. We also have worked tremendously hard to de-stigmatize mental health and to emphasize and support mental health for all in our district. Family, I think this is such a great quote, is not an important thing, it's everything. And in our district, families are front and center in all that we do. And lastly, if it's really true that children become what they experience, then it's imperative that we all teach kindness in the classroom and that we treat each other with kindness. And so even though these are really simple ideas, it's pretty sophisticated work, and Da Vinci was right. So very quickly, I want to just recap where we are in terms of SEL. We continue to strive toward common practices and common language. First and foremost is trying to connect every single student with a significant adult. All of the research tells you that one connection with one significant adult, only one, can really impact and change the course of someone's life. And so we know that in our schools, our students make incredibly significant connections with adults, so much so that in our district, so many, and perhaps even sitting on our board, our alumni who have come through, they come back and they work in our district. I keep saying that HBO should do a mini-series because nobody does this anymore. They come back to where they went to school to serve. It's incredible. So relationships matter, connections matter, not only within our district, but within our community. Regarding community service organizations, lots of mental health and community organizations, neighboring school districts. I have to be honest with you, we are in such a wonderful place in this community. This morning, I attended a county meeting of lots of school districts. We are there for each other, we help each other, we support each other as never before. We are no longer siloed, but we really are united in support of our students and their families. We've had, we continue to really deepen the district's relationship with the canteen, the staff and the youth who attend it. Anadaga County has brought us together and brought us support for which we are very grateful. And New York State has shown up with a real commitment to students and their mental wellness and emotional growth. Our teachers and staff are committed to building classroom communities that are vibrant and enduring. And we do this in lots of ways, especially through evidence-based practices like Second Step, restorative practices, social skills groups that our counselors run. And through restorative practice, we have specialists in training that continue to bond our buildings in new and deeper ways. Additionally, through ruler and zones of regulation, we're beginning to build a common language. And I'll come back and talk about that in a little bit. In terms of mental health, we have our monthly mental health themes. And we started the year with suicide prevention, the chalk-the-walk, anti-bullying. And January last week were our star stamps, and I'll come back and talk about that in a minute. Every month, trying to highlight some aspect of wellness for our students and our staff. We continue to keep connecting our community to the services that are available to students by making it easier for them to access our professionals. And that's through the crosswalks that exist on our website, as well as magnets that people put on their fridges. And that was an idea that came out of parents and continues. And people keep saying, I have my magnet, I know exactly where it is, which is awesome. We continue to screen students with the BiMas screener twice a year at this point. And that's really to help us identify both areas of concern with students as well as strengths. And every building is working on one of the aspects of the findings in that. And we've enlisted the help of Carrie Lamachia from Baldwinsville Central Schools. They have been doing BiMas longer than we and have an incredible amount of expertise to share. And it's again, an example of the interconnectedness of the districts across our county. We're involved right now in a refresher around suicide safety and prevention for staff. And we offered on our last superintendent's conference day a training for our mental health staff in suicide prevention. And we offer that initial training when staff is hired at new staff orientation. So it's a commitment to understanding the warning signs of mental distress and providing staff with the skills they need to make a warm handoff to the professionals who can address the concerns. The county has continued to support us in a three-tiered model of mental health support, with our tier-one promised-home specialists who support students and our next extension of the support systems in the building, access which provides families with support, and Liberty Resource Clinics, which are literally mental health clinics that are school-based. We continue our partnerships with myriad organizations, including Contact Community Services. And I'm super excited to announce that we, through a joint venture with Contact, have hired our mental health and wellness educator. It was a position previously held by Kristen Stanton, who's now working for the Suicide Prevention Center of New York. And I'm so excited to introduce our new specialist when she comes. And she, I'm going to wait for the big unveil, but she comes with extensive experiences, including working in EAP. So she will not only be able to provide trainings and support for students, but will be able to provide some stress reduction and training support for our staff. Our district is definitely on the map statewide in terms of our mental health work, and that is largely due to our cabinet and to the Board of Ed for supporting this work. We have taken on some very challenging policies. Most recently, coming up with a memorial policy that very few districts have. And in fact, New York State has reached out to look at our policy as a potential model for their advisement for the state, which is awesome. And we're looking to look at our child abuse and child protective policy, which is in need of a little bit of facelift. Again, with family, we're really lucky in this district to have a robust and wonderful after-school program on the Rocks Campus, Rising Rock Stars. And in addition to supporting kids and providing them with all kinds of unique academic and extracurricular, that's a hard word to say, experiences, they do a lot of outreach with our families, as do our family engagement specialists. I'll come back to food pantry in a second. Our family engagement specialists do all kinds of supports with food and birthday boxes, school supplies, helping with housing applications, providing clothing and boots, supporting with medical transport, and helping get access to medication, and even helping with form completion, such as the FASPA form, which is no small feat. I'm also super proud of our food pantry and snack pack program, which has reached the almost thirty thousand snack pack mark in four years. The need is robust, and our students provide support for feeding their peers, which is remarkable and wonderful. So we're really particularly lucky that we have this kind of support for families and students. In terms of kindness, we try to highlight that whenever we can. And our star stamps, where they, students were charged with completing this sentence stem. One way I can make my school more welcoming. And it's not enough to say, yeah, we should be kinder, but what am I going to commit to? What am I going to specifically do to connect with other people? And that idea that while we are really interested in connection, it's also incumbent upon us to do that work ourselves. This work is intense, it's hard, it requires a lot. And thinking about how to make it sustainable has been my focus this year. And so this year, while it's not super, super fancy, it is the nitty-gritty work of looking at our infrastructure protocols and the skills we're teaching. And so this year, rather than build out, I've tried to build down, if that makes sense. And I've been really fortunate to be able to go to as many mental health meetings in all the buildings and really get a much more granular understanding of what protocols are in place, what infrastructure is in place, so we can really work to have consistency across the district. I've learned a lot, and there's an incredible amount of work that goes on across our buildings in mental health. So as you know, I'm retiring July 1st, and it's a bittersweet decision for me. And so point of privilege, I want to leave a couple recommendations. I think it is absolutely essential, both for SEL, DEI wellness, and mental health, that we have consistent instruction. And that means implementing evidence-based programs, employing consistent approaches, and providing ongoing professional learning for our staff. And I think we have to really go deeper into committing to a focus on mental wellness for all. Our students, their families, our staff. It's incumbent. As we recover from this pandemic, we are still in the midst of what I think of as an epidemic of anxiety and depression among all. And I'm really proud that in our district, we talk about these things, and we talk about them on the regular. And we are bringing that out of the shadow. I encourage us to continue that. And I think we have to really figure out how best to support the adults in our system. You cannot pour from an empty cup. And education is really hard work in and of itself, let alone the past four years. So I think that's a new horizon for us. I think we need to ensure that our mental health supports stay, the ones we have stay in place. We have done yeoman's work, building out and up the supports that we have. We are really a shining example in this state, if not across the country. And we need to maintain and solidify the structures we have in place. We need to continue to work toward those common protocols that we all share. And I think another horizon is more outreach and programming for families. We are in this together. We cannot do this work without you. And we feel we are essential for all students. And so this idea that we are together in service to students is, I think, really beautiful and essential. And last, but perhaps most important, is that we always have to keep learning, that if there's a better way to do something, we need to do it, and we need to be brave about growing. So some of the challenges, I don't have to tell anybody in here about anxiety and depression, social media, vaping, and any other number of challenges our students face, as well as the challenges our families are facing, trying to balance so many priorities at one time. I also think our staff has really shown up in robust and exhausting ways over the last four years, and those continue. But if I were to put one challenge on your radar that you may not have thought about in this way, it would be the challenge of time. If we want to provide direct instruction in mental wellness and in all aspects of emotional competency, we need to provide the time in our schedules to do that directly and intentionally. This cannot be something that we throw at and hope that it sticks. We have to be really intentional about it. And that might require reimagining how we use time. So what can you do individually in this work? I would encourage you to go to the kindness website, like there's literally a kindness website. It's there. I also would encourage you to go to the How We Feel app. This is perhaps one of my favorite things that I've found in the last couple of years. It comes out of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. It's, wait for it, free. And it literally is a one-stop shop for all things emotional. It helps you check in and figure out what you're feeling, and it reminds you that whatever you're feeling, you can feel differently. How? It gives you some ideas. And you can track, you know, every time, before I go to the gym, I feel anxious. Huh. Maybe I try to do something that lowers my anxiety before I go to the gym. I think it's really predicated on the fact that if we can name what's going on for ourselves, we can take a beat, figure out what we're feeling, and then we can figure out what we might want to do about it. So I think this is invaluable. And lastly, this video is really about extending grace. None of us knows what anyone else is contending with. And I guarantee you, everyone is contending with something. And so this idea of being patient and forgiving other people, it's really hard work. And it's, it's the work. So I think those are things that each of us can do on an individual level. I think we can also let our elected officials know that funding matters. What our county has done has been extraordinary. We're in year three of a five-year initiative. Let's keep it rolling, Anadaga County. And lastly, keep stepping. We never give up on kids and we never give up on each other. And this is blurry, I apologize, but it says, "We must find the time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives." I want to thank all of you because you make the decisions. I appreciate the decisions you've made with respect to the wellness of our students and their families and our staff.
Questions, comments? We'll start with Thomas.
I just wanted to say thank you.
So I, I was going to write a big speech because I know this is your last present, might be your last presentation.
I think it is my last.
Well, unless I can, unless I can request something from the superintendent just to make you come back here. But I want to, I won't be white. I just want to thank you for putting your heart and soul and passion in everything you do, no matter what it is. I appreciate it. It was a sad day when I saw your name on the cabinet rolls that came through. And I know it's a difficult decision. As somebody who hired, everybody who's not retired thinks it's the most awesomest thing in the world, but it is a difficult decision, especially when you love what you do. But thank you. You'll be missed. We'll figure out a way to present something, even if it's about painting the walls. We'll figure out a way to present something, even if it's about painting the walls. Any else? Thank you. Hey, Mr. Keegan, you have information for the governor's proposal and our state aid ones really look like?
Well, Lisa Goldberg's presentations are so compelling, it's a...
We can have her do this one, maybe it'll...
Well, I want to assure, I wanted to start out by saying this one will not be as compelling. I want to remind the board, so last February, February 6th, we did a presentation on the governor's budget proposal and the tax cap. This year, Governor Holcule came out with her state aid numbers a little earlier. So we have some information to share, very brief presentation of information. But I want to let you know that I'll be back on February 5th to share more information as we digest the governor's proposal, learn more about it, and also, at that time, bring information about the preliminary tax cap. So I just wanted to share the information that we have. So a lot of numbers on the slide, and I think it's important to just take a moment, just remind everybody that, you know, we have two primary revenue sources. We have our state aid, which we're going to talk about tonight, and we have our tax levy. Those are the two biggest pieces. And, you know, of our 200-plus million dollar budget, $92 million of it this year is coming from state aid. So I'd like to walk through the line items really quick. The first column is what the state is projecting we're going to get for this year, the 23-24 school year. And you might say, well, they're projecting that. Didn't we do a budget, and don't we have a number for our state aid? Well, we do, but you have to remember that some of our state aid is expense-driven. And so what we put in the budget for this year always ends up being a little different than what we get. And this is the latest projection of what our state aid will be. And the biggest component of that is the first line item, foundation aid. And so we've been celebrating that last year was, you know, a couple of years ago, the governor made a commitment to fully fund foundation aid. We now, this year for 2023-24, we are fully funded finally with foundation aid. And next year, you can see a slight increase in that. I say a slight increase, it's a decent dollar amount, 1.9%. The next two aid categories are called excess costs, private and public. And this is the aid we get for servicing and supporting our students with special needs. And so what New York State does is it recognizes that some of our students, the cost to serve, provide OTPT, speech, special ed settings, and the right setting as per the Committee for Special Education has determined through the IEP that a child needs. And what they do is they give us some additional aid. For, you know, occasionally, we send a child to a private setting. Most of our children are handled here in the district or through a BOSI's program, and that's the public aid. So that's our students with special needs, the aid that we get for them. Moving down into hardware and technology and software library and textbook and transportation aid, those are expense-driven aids, again, like our excess cost aid. But the state provides us with hardware and technology, software library and textbook aid, not their relatively nominal dollar amounts relative to what we, you know, spend in those areas, but certainly very helpful. Our transportation aid is a big number. We have 150 buses on the road, we triple trip our kids. We've got probably 160 driver and attend, driver, bus drivers in attendance on staff. And it's a significant component of our budget. Thankfully, though, we're getting about 75% of what we spend in transportation aid. So the state's very good about reimbursing us for that home-to-school transportation. Another area we've seen a decent increase in is our BOSI's aid. And we continue to work very closely with our OCM BOSI's to provide additional programming for our students. And so this is the aid we get back for being collaborative with the other districts. Our BOSI's are Boards of Cooperative Education Services. And so to the extent that schools get together, work together, try to provide high-quality programming at a low cost, the state gives us aid for that. And so we see an increase in our BOSI's aid because we've been spending more with BOSI's. The next item down, if you get down into the building aid area, that number looks like it's going down, and that's only because we have a lot of projects in progress and will be filing final cost reports and other documents with the state that'll impact next year's aid. So I suspect that they'll come up as we get closer to finalizing the budget. And then our universal pre-K, our aid is $2.4 million. That aid's increased over the last three years, and we have over 300 children attending full-day UPK with those funds. So overall, we're looking at a 2.5% increase in our aids. What will happen now, the governor makes her proposal, and then the legislature between now and March 1st will debate and advocate for more aid. And I'm hopeful that we'll see an increase, although there have been many years where we haven't seen an increase. So we'll just have to see how the legislative process plays out. In that first Saturday in September, we'll be meeting with our legislators, and we'll have an opportunity to talk to them about some of our needs. So that's the first look at state aid. Any questions at this point for me? And as I said, I'll be back on February 5th with some more information on the aid.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thomas.
So out of all the projections that you had there, I noticed that the universal pre-K one in particular didn't have any difference. Was there, is there a specific reason why that one?
Yeah, there's a long history with universal pre-K, where we've received both state and federal funding for those programs. And they often, we just recently got increases, but they often don't increase year to year. We were receiving about $606,000 for the same amount every year for 20 years. You know, so never increased. And so, you know, we'll see in the legislative process. There's perhaps there'll be increases in that. But we've received over $1.7 million more aid in the last couple of years on, for universal pre-K. So I suspect that if there is an increase, it'll be a nominal one. Thank you. Sorry, Josh.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that we're looking at a 2.5% increase, which obviously does not quite fill the gap that we've had with inflation this year, right? I just wanted to put that out there.
No, you're 100% right. This is, hence my brief and black and white presentation here. It's not, this is not good news for us at 2.5%. But as I said, we've got some work to do to get behind the numbers, understand if there's any upside in the numbers, and hopefully we'll be able to come back, both on the 5th and between now, certainly on the 1st of March, with some better news. But this is where it stands right now, and thank you for pointing that out. No, it's not, it's not good news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, we're at the, excuse me, comments from the audience portion. The Board of Education meetings are meetings that are held in public, and the public is welcome to attend and observe in North Syracuse. We welcome your comments on matters related to the district. Going to use a period of time. We have one speaker today, so it'll be three minutes. We assign three minutes per person. Topic: Issues involving particularly students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. Employee or student concerns should be addressed to the superintendent of schools during regular business. So we... Sorry, just some... No, and so... Gordon, go ahead, and start the timer when you start.
Hi, I just wanted to take a moment publicly recognize the hard work and efforts of the Human Rights Club students at CNS High School. We had an awesome December. We ran a fundraiser for new Americans and refugees that arrived in the Syracuse area over the holiday seizing, season-seeking sanctuary and a safe place to live. We collected well over 100 coats, and then, which is a feat in itself. But we also adopted a Syrian family with two young children, and we gifted them these two huge giant bins of bedding, spices from their home country, kitchen utensils, clothes, toiletry supplies, and toys and books for the boys. On January 4th, we stuffed three cars and dropped off our donations. And then this Saturday, we are heading down to Interfaith Works, and the students will be volunteering to set up two different homes for the new Americans. So kind of following in the suit of what Lisa was talking about, we have such compassionate, kind, inclusive students and human beings in our schools. And I'm just so proud to be part of them in this group, and I just wanted to give a big public shout out, so.
Board of Education Committee reports. I will just go to Mr. Crabtree, anything on...
Sorry, been mentioning him a lot, but on February 2nd will be the Capitol Conference virtually. I believe it's from 9:00 to 12:30. This is where we get to meet the commissioner. We get to meet people from the New York School Boards Association, and then we will meet with some of the governor's people, and I promise Lisa I will be kind. On the 3rd, Donary said that the Central New York School Boards Association will then meet with our local legislators. But we have been meeting with them every month. Their representatives have been here, or they've been there. They've been very, very supportive. Senator Mannion, Assemblywoman Hunter, and Assemblyman Sterpi, who are in our region, have always been supportive. So I think I'll definitely be kind to them, too. That's it.
Seven, okay, thank you. Have a BOSI's report this round. That's, no, that's... No, not a problem. I just knew I didn't see one, so I wondered why it was here. And I watched the Bills game also, and so enough said about that. Superintendent's comments. I was going to say something about the Bills, I'm going to stop.
Thank you. I just want to say that our boys varsity basketball is 13-1. They are ranked 13th in New York State. Set the game this past Friday. But prior to that, Andrew Benedict scored his 1,000th point, and he's still a junior. So there was a big recognition for Andrew. This is the second year that our wrestling won Section III duels. They will represent Section III at states at OCC. And our girls wrestling, Friday night, first time ever, Megan McGrath in the weight class for Section III state tournament. She's very impressive, so she should be very proud, we should be very proud. We also have a group of young ladies in competitive cheer, Bling It On. They came in second in Beville. And I believe in Friday night's win, Nathan Francis scored 28 points, while Michael Gallo and Michael Fouts, 13 points, and while Michael Sellen chipped in another 12. So lots happening, going on, and there's more to follow. And tomorrow night, there is a boys swim meet at Nottingham. Also swimming and diving, that we'll be attending.
Thank you. Board of Education comments, other board members. Mr. Ludden.
Yeah, beyond the positive presentations we had today, which were great and are showing a lot of great things, well, except yours, Don. I do want to just call on everybody that it is going to be a challenging year, and I encourage you all to contact your individual legislators because the numbers that we saw today are not going to cut it, and the legislature will do better, but we have to make sure that they do. So please consider doing that, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Else? I'm going to go to Thomas, if you have something you'd like to share.
Yes, I do. So I was calling some of my friends and some students these past couple of weeks as January rolls by. And something that I noticed on a lot of people's minds is the idea of food waste and how big of a problem it is in the United States. And I think that's really come to mind from a lot of people with the donation bins that we now have in the cafeterias at CNS. So I had a couple of friends of mine do some research and run some statistics into the actual amount of food waste in schools. And among the students themselves, the average student in a given year at the school wastes about 70 pounds of food just from their lunches in the school every single year, which would, assuming that our school was average, would be about 7,000 pounds for the high school alone. Doing some more calculations with the donation bins that we were able to set up this past year, we were able to collect roughly 1,000 pounds of food to collect and redistribute to communities, which is about a 15% waste reduction. So we still have a lot of way to go with it, but I think it's really important that we keep bringing about this awareness amongst students, and I think it really is already making a difference. Can definitely tell that a lot of people are being more mindful about not only what they take, but what they do with it. So I think moving forward, it's important that we keep kind of this issue in mind and ways to potentially resolve it, or at least kind of circumvent the problem in hand. And yeah, thank you.
Curious, do you know if other school districts are looking at this?
I actually have a meeting with Jamesville Duet tomorrow about bringing their program over to their district, and then I'm going to be calling a few other ones later this week. But it is something that's been started in some other states, but it hasn't really seen much activity in New York, which is why I've been trying to kind of bring it about here.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, moving to routine action items, I'll ask for a motion to consider the minutes, approval of the minutes of January 8th, 2004, and a second motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Ms. Segru. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, and thank you, those are carried. And a motion, please, for B, C, and D, which are the classification placement of disabled students for school, preschool, and home instruction. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Ludden. We have B, C, and D before us for discussion or comments, are there any? None, all in favor? Posed, and those items are carried. We have a first reading of a policy, workplace violence prevention, a motion to put that before us, please. Motion, Ms. Segru, second from Mr. Marizio. Questions, concerns? None, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried, thank you. B, resolution to create flag football assistant coach position, a motion, please. Not that many people where I can't get the names, Mr. Ludden, second from Ms. Segru. Discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried, and a resolution to create a point for full-time food service helper at Gillette Road, motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Ms. Segru. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried, and a motion to approve the tax exemption for firefighters and ambulance workers, that is before you. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Ludden. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, thank you, that item is carried, and we have the declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus to accept. A motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. Segru. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And a resolution to declare emergency for fire alarm system at the junior high school. Marizio, second from Mr. Ludden. Any discussion there? None, all in favor, carried. And a motion to approve lease agreement with OCM BOSI's for regional information. Marizio, second from Mr. Ludden, any discussion there? None, all in favor, posed, and that is carried, and a resolution to accept the workers' comp settlement offer, this is a roll-call vote, so I'll see if we can get a vote. Second from Mr. Ludden. All right, that is before us, any discussion before the roll-call vote? Seeing none. Aye. Aye. Hey, that carried, thank you. Hey, I gotta read a list here, because it's the time of year, so I'm gonna acknowledge the following retirements. Even Bacon, an elementary teacher retiring with 31 years of service. That Doria, teaching assistant retiring with 34 years of service. The Patachi, did I say that right? Probably, teaching assistant retiring with 21 years of service. Kim Root, elementary teacher retiring with 25 years of service. Pat Root, social studies teacher retiring with 29.7 years of service. Mary Ellen Swanson, teaching assistant retiring with 20 years of service. James Van Hoven, art teacher retires with 30 years of service. Cherry Rotelli, physical therapist retiring with 30 years of service. Lorraine Norris, elementary teacher retiring with 30 years of service. Trisha Soraki, excuse me, Soraki, art teacher retiring with 36.5 years of service. Gavin Ahn, teacher aide retiring with 18.4 years of service. Wendy Gorman, speech therapist retiring with 33 years of service. And, wow, Mary Catherine Murphy, special education teacher retiring with 42 years of service, going after the Gainer Award. So, oh, I'm sorry, did I say that out loud? I don't have words, and I know we'll probably have another sitting of that list at the next meeting, but that's a lot of experience right there. I wish them all happy and long, healthy, fun retirement. Out for us there, okay. Production personnel report, A, a motion to place that before us, please, motion from Ms. Segrew, second from Mr. Ludden. That is before us, any discussion on that? None, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Support staff personnel, B, motion. That, Ms. Segrew, second from Mr. Ludden. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Administrative personnel report, C. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Crabtree. Got you on the peripheral vision. That is before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, that is carried. Did I congratulate Ms. Hill, who we just hired, and Mr. Ludden on your tenure? And just to thank you to both of you for stepping up, because that's what you've both done, and I know, Dave, you had quite a set of shoes to fill, and you've done a great job, thank you. Yeah, I can be genuine and nice now and then, but it's true. Thank you. Hey, this time, I'll make a motion for executive session for the purpose of reviewing one legal matter with no action to follow, one personnel matter with no action to follow, if I get a second, second from Ms. Marizio. Discussion? Favor, posed, and that is carried, and a motion for adjournment, motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Ms... Thank you for adjourned. 6:53.